... Community Church. I'm glad to be here tonight, and if you would bow your head with me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father of power and might, wisdom and justice go beyond all that we can even imagine or think, and it's through you that authority is rightly administered. Father, we know that in you there are laws. Your laws are enacted, and we ask, Father, that your laws would be here on earth and that your judgment is decreed. Father, we ask that you assist your council members with your Holy Spirit, with your guidance and fortitude for our councilmen and women, and all of our city officials. Heavenly Father, we know that you make a way where there seems to be no way, Father. Amongst all that is taking place in this world, Lord, we just look to you for watching over us and keeping us safe. And, Father, as we seek your ways of righteousness and justice and mercy, we also lift up our firemen to you, Father. We thank you for them, Lord, that as others run away, Father, they run into the danger. We thank you for them, Lord. We lift them up to you. We just ask that you keep them safe and that your presence be with them. Grant that they may be real and enable all of us, Father, to be powerful and protected, that as you lead us with your honesty and integrity. Father, we just ask that you accept our prayers. We offer for our city. It's in your goodness. Watch over all those in authority, so that the people everywhere may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Brenda. So now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the rule?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's Clem.
Here.
McLaughlin.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Chesney.
Here.
And then if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Chesney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for joining us. First is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Busker. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes from May 7th, 2018. Is there a motion for the approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments. We just have one on here, and it is a non-agenda item, so it can wait until after the meeting is done. Thank you. And number four is the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything that a council member would like to have removed at this time? Seeing none, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the approval to place on file and receive the building permits from April 2018, the minutes from the Third Ward, town hall meeting from May 8th, 2018, approval of the revised city manager's contract, the approval of the resolution R. 2018-31, which is the temporary closure of streets for the Dairy Days Parade on Sunday, June 24th, 2018, approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $849,302.63, the approval of payroll with pay period ending May 12th, 2018, in the total of $537,846.21. Is there such a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the rule?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number five is the recognition of retirees and promotions in the fire department, presented by Fire Chief Todd Allen.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Important day for the Freeport Fire Department, and it's nice we can come here and recognize all of our people here, and our retirees especially. So without further ado, I'm going to call up Deputy Chief Robin Gorsline, who has recently Robin has spent 30 years, five months, with the city of Freeport, Freeport Fire Department, with his hire date of December 11th, 1987. He was promoted to lieutenant in June 1st, 1998, to captain August 10th, 2005, to battalion chief May 28th, 2010, and then laterally moved over to the deputy chief role on the 7th of May this month. He retired on the 15th. Robin's education, he had a bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University, served as an EMT. He was a fire officer one and two. He's a certified hazmat technician and certified as a health and safety officer, and served as the health and safety officer for the Freeport Fire Department. Some notable accomplishments for Chief Gorsline, in 2005, he had a MABUS deployment to the Gulf Coast for relief efforts for Hurricane Katrina. In 2008, he again deployed down to the Gulf Coast for relief efforts for Hurricane Ike and received both humanitarian awards for both deployments. He also has two unit citations for fire victim rescue efforts. He's married to Karen and has two children, and we thank you for your service, Robin. I'll be brief. I've got three minutes, right? Thank you for the city for this. I really appreciate this recognition. Thank you especially to my family. It's a difficult career to be married to, firefighter. It's very demanding on a family, so thank you to my wife who's here, and my sons and my grandchildren as well, and daughters-in-law. And thank you to my coworkers, kept me safe for 30-plus years. I appreciate that. Didn't let me do something stupid and get myself hurt, so I appreciate that. And just real quick, I was thinking about the last 30 years and where the department itself has gone. Some real notable improvements that jumped to mind, first and foremost was the development of the paramedic program. Tremendous higher level of care that we're providing to the citizens of Freeport than when I started. We do fire investigations now. We don't have to rely on the state fire marshal or, you know, burden the police with that, so that's a big plus that we started. We have added the technical rescue team and the hazmat team. That one's my favorite, of course. Both components add so much more ability for our firefighters to protect us as citizens. We're so far advanced in our equipment and our training and our ability to deliver services. And so my challenge to you as a city is to continue to support the fire department. The sky's the limit. These guys are going to do great things if you just let them and go all in with the fire department. Thanks again. Next, we have Inspector Bob Bush. Inspector Bush retired after 30 years and five months of service. His hire date was December 9th, 1987. He was promoted to fire inspector November 4th, 2013, and retired this month on the 4th. He is an EMT basic. He's a fire officer one. He's been a fire inspector, certified fire inspector. He's also certified in fire investigations and investigations one, two, and three. He's also a fire department health and safety officer and an incident safety officer. He has certifications in hazardous materials incident command, public fire and life safety educator, and is a juvenile fire center intervention specialist. He's married to Vestha and has four children, and Bob, we thank you for your service.
I'd like to thank, first of all, my wife, who stood by me all these years and supported me in this, and the guys I work with, and the city also. It's been an honor to serve on the fire department. It's been a rewarding career being a fireman. I never imagined the excitement that it brought being a fireman. As Robin stated, you know, there's many things that has happened down through the years that the improvement that has come about in this department. We see these younger guys that's coming on, and they had that ambition to carry on and to make this a better department. I know we're leaving now, but I know we're leaving it in good hands, and we just implore to continue to support them as they go forth and to make this a better department. And we have a good chief, and he's eager to make it happen. So again, I thank you and wish you the best. Amen.
Battalion Chief Brian Bruce is not able to make it, but I do want to talk a little bit about his career as well. He also had 30 years of service, and he was hired March 16th of 1988, promoted to lieutenant in August 8th, 2005, to captain May 3rd, 2010, and then to battalion chief June 27th, 2017, and he retired on the 6th of May. He was certified as an EMT, a firefighter two and three, certified hazmat and tech rescue certifications. He was a hazardous materials incident commander, a fire officer one, and fire officer two, certified as a fire apparatus engineer, and an incident safety officer. As one of his notable accomplishments, he also was deployed in 2005 to Hurricane Katrina to support humanitarian efforts there, and received a humanitarian award from the MABUS. He's married with Monica and has three children, and we have a plaque for him that we'll give him at a later date. So we thank Brian for his service. Now if you guys could come on over here, I'll have you stand along the wall. The first one I'd like to talk about is Deputy Chief Scott Reiser. If you could step forward here. Deputy Chief Reiser was hired 9/11 of 1991. He was promoted to lieutenant December 31st of 2009, to captain May 5th of 2013, and then now to district chief on the 7th of this month, and then now moved to deputy chief on the 21st. He's an EMT, certified fire officer one and two, certified fire service instructor one and two. He's certified as hazardous materials operation and a hazardous materials incident commander. He's also got certifications in rope operations and trench operations. He's married to Carolyn and has three children. If we could have Carolyn come up? Congratulations, Deputy Chief. He was hired in August 31st of 1989, promoted to lieutenant December 31st, 2009, and now to district chief May 21st, 2018. He's a certified paramedic, certified fire officer one. He's certified in hazmat operations and rope operations and is a firefighter three. He's married to Penny and has four children. If we could have Penny come forward. He was hired May 29th, 1995, was promoted to lieutenant on the 7th of this month. He's got a bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University. He's a certified Illinois paramedic, certified in all technician-level certifications, and serves on the MABUS 17 technical rescue team. He's also certified as a fire officer one. He's married to Penny and has three children. If we could have Penny come forward. He was hired August 13th of 1994 and is promoted to lieutenant on the 7th of this month. He's a former U.S. Marine. He has a bachelor's degree from Illinois State University and is an instructor in IFSI. And as a side note, Jack was the first person I knew, first firefighter I knew from the city of Freeport because of his work he does for the university in training firefighters all over the state. He's also a paramedic, and he's a technician-level member of the MABUS 17 technical rescue team. He also participated in the Hurricane Katrina relief efforts in 2005. He's married to Tracy and has one son. Tracy could come forward. Chris Patempa was hired March 31st, 2008, and promoted to lieutenant the 7th of this month. He is a paramedic, fire officer one and two. He's a deployable member of the technical rescue team for MABUS 17. He's a certified hazmat technician and hazmat incident command. He's got an associate's degree from Rock Valley College and a bachelor's degree in fire service management from Southern Illinois University. Part of his accomplishments, he's a member of the safety committee, a member of the honor guard, and a member of the foreign fire board and an executive board member for the local 441 Freeport firefighters. He's married to Nikki and has three children, and if Nikki could come forward?
That's right.
He was hired on January 9th, 2007. He's promoted to lieutenant on May 21st, 2018. He's a certified paramedic, a CPR instructor, child passenger safety technician. He's also a rope technician, trench technician, confined space technician, collapse technician, and hazmat technician. He's married to Tiffany and has two children with one on the way. Tiffany? And Deputy Chief Reiser would like to say a few words, if you could.
Good evening, folks. We talked about this, and we thought that rather than have six of us give a similar speech, we'd streamline it a little. And if somebody else feels passionate about saying something, they can come up afterwards. We'd just like to thank the Fire Commission, Chairman Borger, mayor, city manager, all you fellow Aldermans, and we've got two families that we'd like to say thank you to. Our firehouse family, where we depend on each other and you live with each other a third of your life, so it's a very close-knit group. And then, of course, our home family, who we couldn't do this job without their kindness and support. Just like to say that we're all proud of this promotion and look forward to your trust in us with these new responsibilities. Thank you very much.
Yes, we're proud of you. We love you. We appreciate you. We're grateful for your dedication. 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 Ladies and gentlemen, council, this is Esther Zing, and I would like to make a following proclamation. Whereas the city of Freeport was notified by the prudential spirit of community wards that Esther Zing, a junior at Freeport High School, was recently named one of the top youth volunteers in Illinois for 2018, and whereas Esther is currently the founder and president of the Freeport Food Ark, which is a nonprofit that mobilizes young people to fight food insecurities, and whereas Esther has helped other schools create their own Food Ark clubs and has helped them establish gardens and food pantries, and whereas Esther has a goal to create a gardening partnership for a food pantry to help provide healthy food for people and has special concerns for providing food for weekends and holidays when school programs are not available to them, and whereas Esther was recently awarded a $250 grant from the Freeport Community Foundation Advisory Council to help provide shelving and gardening supplies to help the Freeport High School students learn about gardening and contributing to the Food Ark pantry. So now therefore, I, Jody Miller, mayor of the city of Freeport, hereby declare on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Freeport, extended congratulations and best wishes to you, Esther Zing, for your volunteerism and dedication and being a young leader in our community. So thank you, Esther. So then next, we will go on to the donation of two police bicycles from the Freeport Bicycle Company and the Chain Link Cyclists Club, presented with Police Chief Barklow.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like, if I could have Stu Garwick and Steve Getz come forward with the bikes, please. Bring those things over here, I'll tell you them. Steve Oldenberger, Officer Oldenberger, and Officer Richie McMillan, if you could come just sit somewhere close so nobody... Now that the firemen are gone, we don't have to worry about anybody, you know, messing with us. But still. Stu, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of explain a little bit, if you have to stand here with the microphone, about what brought you to this, and then I'll finish up with some other comments, but maybe some of the features too, because they're really cool.
So I'm Stu Garwick, owner of Freeport Bicycle Company. I'm donating these bikes to the police department. It really is not... It isn't... Like, I didn't buy these bikes. This was a collective... You know, we had... We put on a bike race. Well, let me start with... Last year, I was at the cruise night, and I ran into a couple officers on the police bikes, and their equipment was pretty substandard. We kind of started talking about it, and they were really old. And so the one officer invited me up to where they keep all the other bikes in this garage, and I could tell that it had been quite a while since they had bought any equipment.
Early 2000s.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm very cognizant of the fact that money's pretty tight, and so buying, you know, for the city to buy the police department new equipment is probably pretty far-fetched. I think they have other priorities. So I made it my goal at that point that I was going to find a way to get them two new bikes. There was an event we put on in February called the Frostbite 40, and it's a gravel road race in February. So it's kind of silly, but first year we did it, 2017, we had 100 people show up, and it's a free event, and we just put out a donation bucket, and people throw money in. And last year, in 2017, we raised enough money to put a public workstation out at Highland Community College. We think it's a nice value-added thing to the cyclists of the community. And so my expectations for 2018 were that we're going to have 200 people show up, and we're going to have twice as much money. And that week, we had tons of rain and ice, and I thought, man, nobody's going to show up, and we're not going to get these bikes. We had 130 people still showed up, and I thought, well, you know, maybe we'll get enough for one bike. And the buckets just kept getting fuller and fuller, and we had some prizes folks donated that we raffled off, and end of the night, we added up all the money, and this is what we have here. This is a collective effort from Chain Link Cyclists, all the people that threw money in the bucket. This is what they did. So, you know, I was happy that we were able to use our resources to get these bikes. But again, this isn't us. This is, you know, the community, you know, throwing money in the bucket that did this. So, and to be honest with you, I know you're really excited about these bikes. We are just as excited. You know, I mean, I take a lot of pride in this community. I take a lot of pride in bicycles. I mean, it's what I'm passionate about, and so I feel like you guys need good equipment. You know, I want you guys, I want to see you guys on the best bikes, you know, as a bike shop owner. We want you guys to have the best. And to go along with this, it isn't just the bikes that we donated. We always want these to be in proper order. We don't want the fact that, you know, if it has a flat tire or, you know, something's wrong with the bike that you don't use it. So we are also, you know, as long as you have these bikes, we will work on these bikes for free. So... Just a couple things about the bikes. We did order them in two sizes. There's a smaller frame and a larger frame, so they should be able to fit, you know, all the officers. They're highly durable bikes. I mean, this is what they're made for. They are specced for the police department. So, again, you know...
Hydraulic disc brakes.
Hydraulic disc brakes, suspension, I mean, it's...
These aren't your run-of-mill.
No, this is a...
These are police bikes.
It is, and there's a retail value here of around $2,700, $2,800 in these two bikes.
Wow, that's incredible. That's incredible. But I just, I can't thank you guys...
Wow, that's incredible. That's incredible. But I just, I can't thank you guys enough for what you've done, you know. And just as a token appreciation, you know, we don't give these things out for free. These are challenge coins that we're... I'm going to present to you and to Steve Getz for Chain Link. They're not worth $2,700, but it's worth quite a bit to us that we only give these things just occasionally. And you guys have obviously went above and beyond for the police department. So we so much appreciate these bikes and we're going to be using these bikes. We want to wear them out. We want to... I got two guys here now that are getting ready to take these guys off and they should be able to ride right down them steps.
That's right.
We have the bikes that the class going. You know, that's what these bikes are made for, absolutely. So, thank you so much on behalf of the Freeport Police Department and the city of Freeport. Thanks again.
Yeah, it's our pleasure.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to item number eight, which is the appointments of boards and commissions, which we will do in one motion unless anyone would like to have something singled out. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Acceptance of appointment of Nan McMurray to the Library Board to replace Scott Howe, whose term expires on May 31, 2018. This appointment shall be effective until May 31, 2021. Acceptance of appointment of Troy Barr to the Planning Commission to replace the vacated position by Bill Green, effective immediately through October 31, 2018. Acceptance of reappointment of James Farrar to the Library Board, effective until May 31, 2021. Acceptance of appointment of Stacy Canolo-Fernstadt to the Liquor Commission, effective until May 31, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the acceptance of these appointments?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Busker, for the approval of the appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance 2018-29. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance of the city of Freeport amending ordinance number 2017-18, previously adopted by the city regarding the issuance of a Meadows TIF redevelopment note or an RDA.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you. Just to give you a little background on this, in 2017, we issued, the city of Freeport issued a note with JJ Ventures on the development of the shopping center on the corner of West South and 26. And when we were looking through the RDA, we noticed there were some inconsistencies in the date. So this is just to correct that. So the corrected date should be 2037, which is the end of Up Meadows TIF.
Any questions for Director McDonald?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Inasmuch as this is just an action to correct, basically, what is the scrivener's there, I'm... The motion moved forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Keister, for ordinance 2018-29 to move forward to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 10, which is the first reading of ordinance 2018-30. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending the zoning classification of property located at 327 East Spring Street, Freeport, Illinois, from M2 general manufacturing to B1 restricted retail.
Thank you. Director McDonald?
Yep, it's me. Thank you. Sorry, there's... I'm being trolled over here by the Public Works Director. Just to give you an overview, Luke Gerard of Forston owns the parcel located at 327 East Spring Street in Freeport. He's currently using it for storage of his business supplies and would like to add an apartment on the first and second floors. So, the relief sought is, it's a two-story structure on 327 East Spring. It's currently zoned M2 general manufacturing. In the zoning classification, residential occupancy is not allowed. However, it is an allowable activity as a special use in a B1 restricted retail business district. The applicant currently uses the structure, as I mentioned, for storages of his business materials. So he would like to continue it for the business operations as-is, but he would also like to add residential. Adjacent parcels to this property are RR Riverfront Redevelopment to the northwest, M3 Heavy Industrial to the east, M2 General Manufacturing to the northeast, south and west. It's a special note that the Riverfront Redevelopment zoning classification allows for residential and business operations, which is similar to the proposed use by the applicant. In terms of finding, our department found that it does not pose an undue hardship and will permit a reasonable use of the property. It will alleviate a practical difficulty. It will provide a private convenience and necessity of reasonable need and expediency. It does not produce a monopoly in the area. It is not merely a matter of economic convenience or advantage. It does not pose a substantial detriment to the public good or impairs the city's zoning code. Will not pose a substantial adverse effect upon traffic conditions, property values, public utility service, schools, parks, recreational facilities, or other matters pertaining to the public health, safety, and welfare. It will not unduly increase the population or intensity of land use in the area. It will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. It is compatible with utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities currently provided and will pose a minimal, if any, effect on adjacent property owners and preserve the essential character of the area. That's the conclusion of the staff report. It was presented last Thursday at the Planning Commission and it was approved to be moved forward to council.
Do you recall the vote on that?
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Was there any public input on this?
There was no public input.
Okay. Follow-up?
Yes.
Was it brought to attention during the public hearing whether or not it had ever been zoned residential or had been residential in the past?
I'm going to defer to Randy as he chairs that or attends that commission meeting.
No, there was never any mention about it being residential in the past.
One more follow-up?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm fine with that. I'm not imposing it at any shot by saying this, but I just was wondering if that was a concern of any of the commissioners?
No, it did not appear to be. They were quite excited to see some work being done to that building.
As am I. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, to move ordinance 2018-30 to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 11, which is the adoption of resolution 2018-32. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving a real estate contract for the sale of the property commonly known as 1819 Southwest Avenue in Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Hey, Madam Mayor. This is the resolution to sell the fire station as we go forward. This is the second step in our process. The next step will be, in the next council meeting, where you'll see the ordinance allowing us to set up the lease for the one-year, the multiple one-year leases for the training facility out there. But this will actually authorize me to go forward to sign the contract that is included with this, that was drafted by Attorney Cox, for the agreed-upon amount at the last council meeting.
Questions? Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Manager Crowe. In this contract, I don't, it doesn't note that it's been disclosed that we obviously, it's a known floodplain. It doesn't appear to be in this contract, though. I mean, I understand it's purchased as-is, but is there a reason that language is left out?
No, not... It was no direct reason why that was left out of this contract.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Sure.
Attorney Zito, would that be something that should be reflected in the contract, just given the known hazards? Or do you feel that we've covered all our bases?
Typically, whether or not the designation of a floodplain or hazards is not necessarily included in the real estate contract. It would be part of the buyer's due diligence period to find any of that information out should they choose to do their homework. And I believe the buyer is aware of the conditions of the property, but it would not necessarily be included as a term of the contract.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, for the adoption of resolution 2018-32. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the adoption of resolution 2018-33. Could you please read this for the record?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement to join the Region 1 Joint Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Hey, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution that is, allows us to join the R1PC, which is the Regional Planning Conference Commission based out of Rockford. Currently, members are Boone County, Winnebago County, Rockford, Belvidere, Rochelle, and Ogle County. And they've invited us and Stevenson County two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, to join this. This will give us access to their grant writing, their planning capabilities, as well as move towards having the region sell itself as a single region when we're going forward and trying to attract businesses to the area.
Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Obviously, the current state of the bylaws reflects Winnebago and Boone County for good reason. Moving forward, if we have expansion, obviously of us joining and then maybe the county as well as it anticipated, that some of those bylaws may be revisited.
When we discussed this, when I was discussing with Michael Dunn, as soon as we pass the resolution, they're going to move towards... In fact, I attended, Dave Young and I attended, they're actually going to also add the Greater Freeport Partnership as part of that into the organization. And all they need, as soon as we pass this resolution, they're going to do both of those and modify the bylaws accordingly.
Thank you. Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Just to refresh my memory, we had Mr. Dunn here about a year ago. We were talking about this. This is in line with what we discussed in the outline program of all this regionalism. And, okay, so just making sure we're talking about the same thing. Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Manager Crowe, is there likely to be any future ask for funding as part of this agreement?
As of right now, they are not asking any of the communities. It's basically a purchase for services. If we want services, then we pay for it. And that's, they have money coming from the planning, Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as grants provided into this organization. The cities and counties that are in here only pay in when they want particular services from them.
And matters like that would become...
It would come before council.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Motion to move it forward.
Second.
This is a resolution. I said, great news.
Motion to approve, right?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve resolution 2018-33 made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Busker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 13 is the approval of the five-year water and sewer and the street integrated capital improvement plan. Director Carr.
Yes, there have been no new changes since we presented the five-year capital improvement plan last Monday at the COW.
Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Director Carr. I have an inquiry. We've seen some increases in our water bill recently. I've had, received a few phone calls on that. Is there any chance that we could have your department just break out what the anticipated changes will be in the next five years on just a very simple one-page sheet? Because I understand it went up $8, but people would like to know a little bit of, you know, what's coming down the pipeline. And we discussed it last year, a little over a year ago, but I think that it would be helpful to have just a one-page summary as to what to expect on water and sewer increases. So there's no, not that there should be surprise, because we have discussed it, but not everybody watches our council meetings. So I'd like to be able to send that to people when they inquire kind of what to expect.
Yes, we can get that one-page...
Something like that.
Would you also like it, because we have the five-year plan also posted on the website? Would you like to...
Yeah, just something real simple. So it's, you know, real easy to understand.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
I do see some merit to including that on the portion that says, here's the five-year and here's the 40. That way you can directly correlate what's going to what.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman McLanathan, for the approval of the five-year water and sewer and streets integration capital improvement plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the approval?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Department heads, finance.
Thank you, Iner. First of all, I'd like to report that our auditors will be here on the week of June 18th to begin their fieldwork. And since we're talking about water and sewer projects, we're getting ready to send our second round of delinquent notices to those that have had their water final bills sent out in January through March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community development.
Thank you. Just wanted to let everyone know that Doug Quinn, our new code enforcement supervisor, started today. And I think he's going to be a great asset to our team. And then I'd also like to remind citizens that it's mowing season, so be sure to get out there and mow and don't let your grass and weeds be taller than eight inches. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Just a brief reminder, we also got to make sure we mow our lots, too.
That is true.
Okay.
Public Works.
Yes, thank you. Our street department finished up paving on Adelbert last Friday. So council has a chance to swing out east of the peck and take a look at some of the work that we just took care of. Just be aware that we are using a bike path paver, essentially. So you'll see a little more joints than you would on a normal width paver. We'll be finishing up an inlet repair. I know, Tom, you had made a remark last during the COW regarding why we were repairing inlets. And I would recommend you take a trip out to Henderson. We had an inlet that was sucking from the back and then ended up undermining both the driveway and the sidewalk in that area.
No problem. If you'll come out to my ward and take a look at a couple.
Oh, no. We're going to begin surveying for Float Street for our MFT project this year. And then after the rain, most of the street guys are going to be concentrating on mowing in the cemetery to prepare for Memorial Day. And then to speak on Tom's behalf, he's not here today. He had a little problem at his house. Mother Nature didn't appreciate him moving to Freeport, apparently. The water fountain for Lincoln Douglas Debate Square should be delivered June 5th. And then installation will be there shortly after to follow.
Fire.
Nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. And police.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that, again, this week, we'll have our bicycle class, police bicycle class, being taught out of our department. So you'll see, you know, 10 to 12 officers from different agencies riding their bikes around classes, a week-long class. Last Friday, we had a cop on the roof and taking donations down at Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you for everyone who stopped by to make donations. We raised $1,800, all for Special Olympics. And so, yep. So all that goes, donations go straight to Special Olympics. It's a great time. We really enjoyed it. And then, last thing, we're just making final preparations for the Memorial Day Parade and making sure everything gets kicked off safely. And everyone has a good time. Sounds like it'll be good weather. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. IT? Nothing. Emily?
Good evening. I have a few things from the library. We are, first of all, happy to announce that we have received a very generous donation from the estate of Freeport resident Alitha Hunt, who passed away in January. They, her family has donated in her name over $24,000 to the library to help create a youth services play exploration area in the library. So that should be very nice. We are also kicking off summer reading, June 9th. The theme this year is Reading Takes You Everywhere. We have all kinds of excellent programs and opportunities to win prizes and participate in the summer reading program. The program is for all ages, from infant babies to however old the oldest person in Freeport is. You are all welcome to attend, and we would love to see you. So thank you.
Thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple good things that we have to report here. Opportunity Zone, we were notified on Friday that we're one of, I think it's three, 300 communities or 30 communities?
Thirty.
Thirty communities, thank you. Thirty communities that were awarded an Opportunity Zone. This is a federal program that sets aside certain, gives certain federal incentives for people to move into the area. We have two tracks that were awarded that. That was good work. Short notice for submission of it. They gave us all of 72 hours to submit it. And we got it turned around with the help of Director McDonald and Dave Young and got it awarded. We were notified of that late Friday. So we have also, Liberty Village has broken ground on their first home in almost since 2007 out there. So we're seeing our second set of homes that are being broken ground on that. Bruce Johnson made an appearance back today. For those that don't know, he was, had some very serious surgery, but he was back at the Farm Bureau today and made an appearance at Rotary. And the one thing of real business is letters for opt-out for the aggregation will be going out 18 June. So you have, that's for, if you don't want to participate in the aggregate, electrical aggregation program, they'll be, that's when you have to fill out the letter and send it back in. If you don't send it back in, you are automatically signed up for electrical aggregation. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to touch base a little bit about that Opportunity Zone. I believe that that is going to give us really great leverage with investors coming in. So I'm super excited about what the possibilities could be for us on that. And Saturday, we had our second annual Wine Fest and had approximately 200 attenders. So that was actually a well-attended thing. And I would just like to say thank you to the FDDF and the many, many volunteers that made that happen. And yesterday, we had the honorary street naming celebration for Norman, I'm sorry, for Merle D. Norman. And would like to thank those that attended and honored Merle with the, his legacy and all that he has done for Freeport. And to go along with Chief Barkalow, on Monday at 10 o'clock is the Memorial Day Parade, which is downtown. So anybody that can be a part of that, you are welcome to join us. And just to have a safe and happy holiday weekend. And Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. And just to touch on again what the mayor mentioned, Wine Fest was certainly a, a nice event. There was a great community event. And as the mayor mentioned, over 200 people. So I was, along with many others in this room, able to participate in that. And I think everybody had a fun and safe time. And then Mr. Norman's contributions to this community were not only noted, but certainly had a nice, nice presence at his dedication. And Alderman Ross did a nice job, as well as many others leading that effort. So with that, everybody have a great, great week.
Thank you. Alderman Clem.
I'd just like to echo those two thoughts also. And tomorrow night at Schwartz Chapel at 6 o'clock is the First Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting. Invite all of you or any of you that'd like to come out for it. We will have, Jody Miller will be a speaker. I completely copied Sally's agenda. And we're going to have Kurt Sutman come out and talk about the new software we have that we can pass things forward on, any street needs or any things that needs to be done. So also, we're going to meet tomorrow afternoon on one of the areas with some flooding issues. And I believe that's it. And have a great holiday weekend.
Alderman McLanathan.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, I'd like to make another comment about the, I'm going to call it a festival for Mr. Merle D. Norman. I wanted to sit down and just thank Mayor Jody Mayer, Mayor Jody Miller, and Andrew Chesney and Tom Clem for stopping by. It was a successful event, and it went great. I'd also like to thank Director Carr. You guys, your guys did a really good job on that street. I did hear some positive feedback, which is good. And we look forward to more. But otherwise, that's about it.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
Nothing more, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Busker.
Nothing this evening.
And Alderman Brashaw.
I just want everybody to honor Memorial Day on Monday, and I hope to see you all at the parade. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Keister.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple real quick things. First of all, I want to thank the chief for the presentation earlier for the firefighters. It was very interesting. One thing to keep in mind, though, with the three retirees, we had 90-plus years of experience and training that just left the fire department. So, you know, that's kind of something to keep in mind, but you can tell by the credentials of the ones that got promoted that they're trying to keep up the tradition and get the training and continue to move the fire department forward. Second of all, Wednesday night at the main fire station on Walnut and South Street, Seventh Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting, 6:30. Anybody who wishes to attend is invited. And one final thing, I'm going to announce it tonight and again, next meeting on the 9th of June at Alberta's Airport is the Young Eagle Rally. What that is, is any children from the age eight to 17 can come out to the airport with their parent and get a free ride on the airplane. There's no cost to that. All you got to do is come out and sign up. So I hope to see a lot of people there. That'd be from 9 o'clock till 2 o'clock in the afternoon. No, I won't be flying any of the airplanes. But I'll be hoping to get the kids in, but that's about it. And, no, that's it. That's all I had. I thought there's something else, but that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next is public comments. Dowie, if you would like to start, she has a letter that, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if you could read that letter.
This is an email from Steve Carroll titled Correspondence, Correspondence to the City of Council. While attending the flood mitigation meeting on May 8th, 2018, it became painfully obvious to me and several others that City Manager Lowell Crowe was left out to dry by our city's elected officials. All city officials should have been in the front of the room taking questions and the heat along with him. Instead, council members, along with the mayor, cowered in the back of the room. Please keep in mind that many of the frustrations expressed were caused by the inaction of city government for years. So in all actuality, city government is to blame. While I'm sure each of you may think that the current city government cannot be blamed for the present problems, graciously allow me the opportunity to remind this council that you are now city government, and the sins of the past administrations have become yours, whether you like it or not. So congratulations. You are all now the proud owners of the bad decisions of previous administrations, which some of you were a part of anyway. In future meetings, please have all elected officials at the front of the room available for questions. I also noticed that the Community Development Director wasn't present at the May 8th meeting. Apparently, the Community Development Director isn't interested in a serious issue that affects the community. Well, I guess that stands to reason since she isn't required to live in Freeport, which contradicts with the mayor said in her May 13 column entitled, "We're Heading in the Right Direction." Imagine that, a community development director that refuses to live in the community. I don't consider that as all-in. Mayor, the flood mitigation meeting was well-publicized for some time. You even mentioned it in your May 5 column entitled, "Great Things Happen When People Band Together." The time, place, topics to be discussed, and even the hours were specified. Everyone present noticed that you left the meeting very early. It's been said that you had a previously scheduled meeting to attend. Whether this is true or not is not of my concern. But what could, but what could, but what could possibly have a higher priority than people potentially being displaced from their homes? Your early exit from the meeting displayed an arrogant cavalier attitude towards individuals who are not only tax-paying citizens, but also the collective employers of all city elected officials, including yourself. So it would behoove you to remember who you work for. The citizens of the Third Ward of Freeport has taken the brunt of the city's benign neglect, and judging by the results of the mitigation meeting, they are tired of it. They deserve a better effort than you and the rest of the city council, both past and present, have put forth. Endeavor to be the mayor for everyone, even those that aren't all-in. Signed, Steve Carroll.
Other than other public comments. Tommy?
I wanted to thank Jody Miller to come to the present house for the Nurses Week.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
And you're going to serve my birthday party at some?
I'm not sure about a birthday party, but we'll, we'll discuss it.
Are you going to vote on the city council meeting?
Well, I don't know if we put it to a vote, but we'll discuss it.
And Nancy Donald, did you hear update about the O Eagle store?
Not yet, Tommy.
What about K-Mud?
Not yet. Nothing about that.
All right. And I want to tell Police Chief to do a good job to put, get on the whiff at Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other public comments?
I have a letter to the City of Freeport leadership. I am penning this letter today as a citizen of this great region, of which the leadership of the City of Freeport has great impact and importance. This city is the largest and most influential governing body in four counties here in our hometown area. It is imperative, absolutely necessary for the, it is imperative and absolutely necessary for the ordinances, bylaws, statutes, and general business model of this city to be treated with the highest regard and integrity. The decisions that this governing body makes have literally a ripple effect in many generations to come. So I reiterate, you are required to make good decisions for the impact of many thousands of people. I believe you are. Firstly, I'd like to address the Honorable Mayor, Ms. Jody Miller. I have decades of experience in business, leadership, and governmental involvement. I say this to qualify my following statements and to accentuate that this is not based on just my personal assumption. I solemnly consider it a true honor to be part of your leadership and heart for this great community. It has been a true joy to see how you have been determined to make Freeport a better place, even when regiments of naysayers have been adamantly against you. I applaud your strength, wisdom, and unseen intuition that has benefited these peoples whom you tirelessly and passionately serve in a selfless and humble way. You are undoubtedly one of the greatest leaders that has been overwhelmingly chosen by the people of this city to be the mayor of this city. Congratulations on the countless wins, the growth, and the benefits you have championed for the, and the tireless service. But most importantly, congratulations on maintaining your impeccable character in the face of incredibly challenging opposition. Your character speaks more loudly than the voices of your enemies. Noble Mr. Crowe, my next statements are directed to you. To say that the position that you signed up for was less than enviable would be underwhelming. You were asked to come into a place that had more problems than solutions, to a people who tend to be rigid in the concept that our way is the best way, to a community with a struggling economy, a deteriorating infrastructure, and a knack for pointing out everything that is wrong all the time. You were asked to do something that had never been done before here and asked to do it against the grain. You are either a great fool, or you have more courage than we all have recognized. I believe the latter trait has been on display in countless difficult conversations and decisions that a lesser man would have avoided or kicked down the road for someone else to struggle with. Mr. Crowe, I have watched how you have gone into difficult environments with antagonistic people to present a new perspective. You even did it with grace and meekness, which was unnecessary, but to you, very important. I have seen how you have won in these environments and also have lost. You handle both in a way that brings honor to your position and to our city. Please stand tall, knowing you are making a difference, and the gratitude you deserve will never amount to the opposition you face. But there is someone who keeps very good books. So I say thank you, even if I stand alone, but I know that I do not, because I hear the echo of that thank you in the hearts of many other citizens. Esteemed alderpersons, I address you with great respect. I find it anomalous that progress, that the progress you have seen in just two short years have come from a group of this great diversity. Diversity is beautiful. Division is deadly. You have accomplished this impressive and difficult objective of working together to create a better and brighter future for your constituents, even when disagreement was thick in the room. I can say that the precious people of Freeport should have great commendation and thankfulness to you, because you have represented them very well. There are history books that will mention you, and you have earned great reviews from that historic record. Revered heads of departments.
Pastor, just one second. Is there anyone that would be an objection? Allow him to finish. He's exceeded his three minutes. Okay. There we go.
Revered heads of departments, your discourse is last. You hold in your hands of decision the lives of many dozens of employees and their families, the future opinion of your entire department, and the advancing or destruction of the positive city goals. Your ranks have changed. They have been ridiculed, and they have been contracted. Yet here you are, serving us every day for not enough money. Thank you. It is difficult being in the middle between the angst of the worker and the will of the council. I know. Yet here you are, fighting for the benefits of your people, and balancing that with the fight for the betterment of the city. It is a position with pressure from above and pressure from below. But in the same way that diamonds are formed from great heat and intense pressure, I have watched, as you have glimmered, after even a hard day. Go ahead and embrace the process, but do it, knowing that we are all very thankful for all of your sacrifice. I am greatly humbled to share these words with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 19, which is the executive session. Madam Clerk, would you please read this for the record?
Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Secondly, pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C3, the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in this act, including a vacancy in a public office, when the public body is given power to appoint under law or ordinance, or the disciplined performance or removal of the occupant of a public office, when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance. Lastly, pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C21, discussion of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06, with action to follow.
Is there such a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
There's a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Smith to move into executive session. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan. Ross. Smith. Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Passes eight to zero.